I'll be at work tomorrow.
All right, we're gonna call the order, the Glades County Board of County Commissioners's regular meeting for Monday, November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. At six P M. we will have the prayer by Commissioner Sapp and the pledge by Commissioner Taylor with everybody's three vices.
Dear Heavenly Father, I believe to come before you, give you thanks again for another beautiful day. I ask you to be with us tonight, Lord, as we conduct this business. Today it would be pleasing in your sight and beneficial to all of the Glades County people. I thank you, Lord, for the greatest country in the world, and I thank you for the blessings you give us daily. Forgive us where we fail you, for it's in Jesus' name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody here tonight. It's great to have a full board back up here with five people again. Very good, welcome aboard. All right, do we have any amendments to the agenda? All right, public input on non-agenda items, anyone wishing to provide public comment? Please fill out a comment on the card, on the, hit the comment on card on the table at the entrance to the commission chambers. Please note all comments on non-agenda items are limited to three minutes and/or the board's discretion. At the moment, I don't have any public comment cards up here. Does anybody have any public comment before?
I can say from me, I just wanted to say congratulations to the new commissioners and looking forward to a strong Glades County. Five is a great number, in the Jewish tradition, five is the amount of parts they split the Bible in, so, thank you and congratulations.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to presentations and awards, which is number one presentation by Mr. Reford, Clemens Reford and Associates Incorporated, CRA Artifacts Incorporated, the feasibility report for the Sheriff's Administration bill.
Okay, thank you, good evening, congratulations, you're the commissioner.
Thank you.
I'm gonna be as brief as I can, and you ask me what else you want, okay? We were given six sites to evaluate for the county, to look at the possibility for options to place a jail and a sheriff's complex. We have, we started looking at those about halfway through the process. We came down and met with the committee and said, you know, three of those sites are not gonna work. They just, they're not even large enough, and you have that in your report, it shows you, and then you can't do it. You really have two options here in this report, and I'm paraphrasing a lot of this. One is to build a new sheriff's office and jail detention. In the increment that the county would like to build it, which is gonna be sixty-four or a hundred and twenty-eight beds or anything in between that. You can look at the cost estimates in there. The whole facility is gonna run you about thirty million dollars in ground cost. Personally, I was about happy with that, I didn't wanna stand and tell you that's what it's gonna cost to do that. So we started looking, and Dan, who is one of my two sons, a civil engineer, he said, you know, I've talked with the sheriff, and there's a lot better way to make this work. If you look, option one, site one, shows a sixty-four or a one-twenty-eight bed detention pod attached to the existing sheriff's office at the ICE facility. That way you do not have to build a sheriff's office, and you only have to build the sixty-four beds, and I'm not speaking for the sheriff or his staff. But I think that he would tell you that I agree with that as a placement. So that is, that is your least expensive, least intrusive thing for the county. So that is an option that we would say, in our opinion, is the best option you have, but there are others that you can look at. The church site had possibilities, but it's zoned wrong. It does not have utilities, which means you've got the Japanese wall across the four-lane highway. Then we have to bring that church up to code for a hundred and forty-dollar wind loads. It is just, it gets to be intrusive in that building, then we have to build a detention pod.
The J.J. Wiggins property, that's the one that's on, it's not that you can't do it, it takes a change to your hand use. If you're confident, amend it to your future hand use paper, so that you gotta go through, so that state can do it. It adds time, it starts adding money, and it starts prolonging everything.
And, and we think, my opinion is, the election since we were here talking the last time, the election went, in my opinion, in your favor with what happened to ICE and detention. So I think that's an opportunity for you there. I've had some long conversations with your attorney, Richard, and he agrees, so I guess our option that we think is most useful to you would be the one that's right beside the existing facility, which is in there, that cost estimate, how to support what it takes. So that's the option, if you wanna talk about any of those other options, you said in that book, and you just ask me, and I'll lay it out for you, that's what we do.
All right, and the cost estimate that's in there, that's for a hundred and twenty-eight bed pod. So if we can cut that down to a sixty-four bed apartment, where everything lines up with corridors, you can straighten lines aside from Sallyport all the way into the new pod.
And the reason we talk about sixty-four and one-twenty-eight is, A C A, American Correction Association, recognizes how many in-bays and guards can be watched from a control room. And typically, they like to see a maximum two-hundred-and-fifty-six beds, which is a ground floor designated level. So when you build a sixty-four, if you think about it, sixty-four is one quarter of that two-hundred-and-fifty-six. You build a control room, so that you can add, say, in ten or fifteen years from now, Glades County takes off and grows. And you say, sheriff says, we gotta have a whole bed, you come in and add the beds to that model, and you won't have to add staff under the control room. That's the best thing about it. So I notice lots of digest here in a few minutes, but any questions you have, I'll be glad to come back. If you actually do a workshop or whatever, if you do a workshop, I imagine you can call me on the phone. But it's, to us, it's pretty evident which is the best option for you, which may have some of the thoughts that are better, which you wanna pursue, just outside. Any questions I can answer for?
Well, I don't have a question, I went through the book, I took it home, looked through every bit of it, and I totally agree that what you're saying is the best option.
I think it's your, I think it's your only option for me, I don't think you wanna borrow all the money it would take to do the other side of this, if you would do that.
But a lot, a lot of this is depending on if we could hire somebody, correct? Absolutely.
Well, we've been playing this game for up and down, up and down, but this last time was pretty rough, because we did actually shut the prison down, and we've had to use the facility across the street, which the facility across the street isn't worth even, and Mr. Reford is, you know, the plumbing underneath it is bad, really bad. It needs to be replaced, and it's not worth trying to add something to that facility, so we were, you know, if, if ICE doesn't come back, we're gonna definitely have to look at one of these plans, and we're gonna have to go with them, which hopefully ICE will be coming back, and that solves all of our problems, but but before, we were sitting here in a dilemma where if we go to the state and ask for appropriations without this study and without some background to do it, we wouldn't have gotten nowhere, because I mean, we wouldn't have had any plan, so I appreciate everything that you guys have done to, to look at all these sites, because I mean, we were sitting here in court, and everybody thought, well, go to Wiggins, go here, go here, go there, and then we're like, we don't know, I'm not an engineer, I don't know what's, is best or not, but I think you made it clear here that what our best options are and what can be done and what can't be done, but like I said, I appreciate what you've done. But the ultimate goal is if ICE comes back, we don't have to spend any money, we can.
Well, we're in much better shape than when you first asked me to come down and look at it, because we know where we're going then.
Yeah, we do.
But this book will be good in four years if the political changes, I don't know, but we're still not guaranteed that ICE is coming, but hopefully it does.
I would, I don't have the authority, I can't, but if I watch the whole one on T V, he's coming.
Looks good.
We'll have something in there anyway. Any other questions for Reford?
Thank you very much, y'all did a very good job.
Thank you, sir, well, dear people, I'm just.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, next up is our consent agenda, which consists of number three, county warrants, number four, local trust fund request, number five, approve the minutes of the August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting, number six, approve the minutes of the September tenth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting, number seven, accept in the record the constable officers' financial reports. Oops, that skipped one. Oh, babe, back up, I already checked it off, we're gonna go back. We got a public hearing, number two, an ordinance amending the Glades County Credit Ordinances, amending section one-twenty-five dash one definitions and one-twenty-five dash one-seventy-three dash, you know, the Public Service District.
Good evening, Chair Commissioner Susan Duchesne for the record. This is back before you, that you had at your last meeting as a first hearing, tonight's gonna be your second hearing, which is your adoption hearing. And this is to amend the Public Safety Service District, so we can address protections for wellfield, wellfields, and establishing some setbacks around them to protect our public water supply system. So this was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board on September tenth, and they had a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners to adopt this proposed ordinance for wellfields. Your first hearing was November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, and you approved that draft ordinance. And the law requires that there be two public hearings if you ever amend or change some of the requirements for any of your proposed, or, excuse me, existing uses, which is what you were doing. So this is your second hearing, this has been properly noticed, and I have provided you with the recommended motion. And I didn't know if you had any questions for myself.
Hello.
This ordinance was also adopted by the City of Morehaven, so they have this ordinance for them, and this is also a requirement in the context of plan for protection for wellfields.
Mister Chair, I move to approve the adoption of the ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Glades County, Florida, amending the Glades County Code of Ordinances, Part Two, Land Development, Chapter one-twenty-five, dash Land Development Regulations, by amending Article One, Chapter one-twenty-five, in general, Section one-twenty-five dash one, definition, and by amending Article Four, Zoning District Regulations, Section one-twenty-five dash one-seventy-three, Public Service District, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for authority, providing for qualification, providing for scrutiny of errors, providing for conflict, providing for liberal construction, providing for separability, providing for effective date.
All right. Any motion by Commissioner Taylor, second by Commissioner Sapp to accept the ordinance, any discussion? Any public comments? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Myself is yes, Commissioner Sapp?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Passes five votes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sorry, I tried to skip you. Now we'll go on to the consent agenda, which is number three, county warrants, and just for the new commissioners, if you have a business or anything that related to, your brother owns a business or something, and there's a bill in here that you will need to abstain from that bill, so.
I will send out a list, that will give you the vendors, and you just let me know if you're, if you're conflicted.
And there's a list on, of your packet, it tells you all the bills, anything that's on there, so.
Can't read it, but can you? You gotta go back to bigger letters. Can you do that, please?
Mister Chair, you would need to abstain from Taylor electric.
Thank you. And number four is local trust fund request, number five, approve the minutes of the August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting, number six, approve the minutes of the September tenth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting, number seven, accept in your record the constable officers' financial reports for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, and number eight is records disposition, two thousand twenty-four dash one.
Motion for approval.
Excuse me, Mister Chair, I'll need to abstain from both you and Taylor, liquidating air conditioning item as I am a relative.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Patterson?
Second.
Second.
Yeah, second by Commissioner Barnes. And, the Commissioner Taylor abstaining from all bills of favor electric. Uh, is any discussion? I would like to say, I'm here to consult the officers' financial reports. I appreciate everybody putting their money back, that's good for us. Was it, if I recall, was the, the, um, the county dump, was there money in there changed in this, or is that, is that later on?
Um, that's just, the constitutional officer reports is just the reports from your constitution.
What they gave back.
Yes, it does not include any board departments. That's in your budget amendment, which I think is.
Okay, I understand, but we get there, but I couldn't remember which one it was in, but, any other discussion? Seeing none, all favor?
Aye.
Close, passes five votes. All right, public input on business agenda items, anyone wishing to provide public comment on agenda items, please fill out a comment card on the table at the entrance to the commission chambers. Please note all comments on agenda items are limited to three minutes and/or the board's discretion. Our first agenda item is number nine, the election of a chairman and a vice chair.
Excuse me, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Stanley, he's done a great job, and I see he's in the, in the chair.
Any other nominations?
Move for nominations to see.
All right, we need a vice chair.
I nominate Ms. Taylor.
Second.
Oh, any other nominations? Okay, can we just do this as one motion to, okay, nominations are closed, if someone wants to make a motion to, myself and Commissioner Taylor, chairman and the vice chairman?
I move to, to elect Commissioner Stanley chairman and Commissioner Taylor vice chairman for the upcoming year.
Any motion by Commissioner Patterson, second by Commissioner Barnes, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close, passes five votes. Thank you.
Were you giving sign and aborting?
What's that? Yes, you go ahead. So you got a lot of signing.
Could you say that for the minutes?
Yes, can you add that to your motion, or do you need another motion?
I amend my motion to include sign and authority for Commissioner.
Thank you.
Can you second that, Mr. Barnes? All favor?
Aye.
Okay, close out. All right, number ten, approve the O C C meeting schedule for two thousand twenty-five.
There were two, um, for Memorial Day, it fell on a Monday, so we bumped it up to the twenty-seventh, and then the other one was Veterans Day.
We, we scheduled it for Monday, because it was February. Y'all, y'all, we changed that.
I'm good with it, I hope y'all.
We're good.
Just get a motion to, get a motion by Mr. Barnes?
Second.
Second by Mr. Taylor? Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close, passes five votes. Number eleven, request to consider partnering with Wedgework to submit a grant application to the U.S. Department of Transportation.
Mister, I did meet with representatives from Wedgework, we did discuss their, their desire to apply for a grant. They did have a representative from another grant writer that actually was there to provide that some information. I did provide the information that they have given us, along with some comments that Connie did review it. I'm not sure if we have a representative here from Wedgework to, to answer any questions, but really, this is, it's a, it's a big grant. Includes a lot of different factors in that grant, so I'm, I'm not sure how deep you wanna get into it, I don't know that I could answer many questions, I just have the information that they have provided. And Connie is here also, if the, if the board has any questions that she may be able to, to answer for you.
I also called the Central Florida Regional Planning Council, because I guess they were working with the South Regional Planning Council, and for some reason, that didn't work out, but the lady from Salisbury and Mary Best Slaughter Store, or whatever, they, I sent them out all the information that we had, and they said, they, they said there's not enough information there for us to make a sound judgment on what, what we can do and what we can't do, so they suggested that we table this until we can get a meeting with Wedgework or somebody and find out exactly what, what they're asking for, because I, I'm not, it's not completely what actually they're asking for, so I don't know if we wanna table it or just, you know, wait till you have that meeting or somebody has that, I think we need to get Regional Planning Council in there with them and, and. Come on up.
Rosemary Story, Executive Director of the Glades E B C for the record. So I also spoke to Mary, we're planning a meeting with Wedgeworks next week, and with their, the person they're using to help them write the grant, Heather Anker. And so the three of us are gonna talk about it, and it seems like it would probably be better if the Regional Planning Council could submit the grant, but we'll discuss it, and then if, and then if we need to come forward to the board again, then we'll have her, Heather, with us, so she's, she, she's doing the grant writing, so she knows the most about the actual grant, about submitting it.
So basically, we really don't have to do anything other than just say, hey, we'll wait till you get some more information, and then you can put it back on, on board.
Yes, yes, we're gonna try and get it on before then.
All right.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Is everybody okay with moving on, pass out?
Yes.
Number twelve, request approval of the legislative priorities as outlined in the attached document, Connie, you can do it.
Good evening, for the record, Connie Van Ash, C A S, Governmental Services. Thank you, Chairman, congratulations, gentlemen, and Commissioner Sapp, congratulations.
Thank you.
Before you is the proposed legislative documentation that we've prepared for your review and, and blessing, or if they have any other changes to go before the legislature, this gives us our agenda and our fair focus of what to advocate on behalf of the county with your, with the delegation members, as well as the other members of the legislature on the House and Senate side. The two water quality projects, the wastewater treatment plant expansion, we've been seeking funding for, with improvements to go along with that, it's now up to seven point one million dollars. The Washington Park Phase Two, we're still going after that, grants have been filed, but we don't have any, the grants have not been awarded, so we don't know, so based on that, we're continuing to go forward and ask for funding for these two high priority projects, and the water quality segment. The public safety issues, the fire station improvements needed for the Buckhead Ridge, nine hundred thousand. And we put in a picture of the fire station for the legislative delegation, so they could see transportation projects. The County Road Seventy-four, we're asking for the legislative assistance to hopefully turn that road over to the state. And we're gonna work on that, we've asked for additional funding for the stop and scrap programs, but as everyone knows, there's not enough funding in there to address your applications once you finally get awarded, so we put that in there. And our standard with the Morehaven Canal request, we reduced it this year to five million instead of twelve million, hoping it'll, it'll bite. And then we let the legislature know that you, the grants that you did apply for, so that they see you, you're, you know, you're moving forward, you're trying to do things, and ask for their support if they can, you know, through the grant process as well. The wastewater subject to sewer projects, and we've been going through the treatment plant expansion, Washington Park, Boundless State, Countryside Meadows, all those were grant applications. We were keeping the Lost Trail, Lake of Control, the Seana Trail in there, as we did last year, for them to finish that segment that's still, I mean, it's through the D O T transportation program, so we've left that in there. The broadband expansion, I know that that's been underway and ongoing, and it continues to be a program that's beneficial to the rural areas, so we left that language in there. Of course, we keep adding the payment, rural taxes, that language is still in there for the legislators to understand that, we've included the maps of all the lands that are in conservation, so that they can see that as part of the grant application, or the legislative document. If there's anything else.
Yes, and the, you have on electric, you should be protection, that county's position for transparent site best evaluation, and that the lake level not be below ten and a half feet, and I totally agree with that, but can, is there any way to put something in there to, where we don't artificially hold it over a certain number, too?
Absolutely.
Did that need to be a water storage for everybody else? I'm not sure exactly what that number is, but I look back, seventeen, eighteen, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen.
I didn't put the resolution in here, I can go back and look and see if it was in that resolution, it's from two thousand and nineteen, so I'll go back and look and see which part of that resolution.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I don't, anymore, I don't think we have to fear, you know, we'll look at it, I have.
Yeah, I'm more worried about it than the twenty.
So something that I need to bring up to the board, O U A, so we need a sewer plant to take in Buckhead Ridge, we need a sewer plant to take in Lakefront Estates, so O U A had called me, very record called me the other day, and they're wanting us to put in, in our wish list for a sewer plant to, to do those two facilities. He gave us, he gave Connie a, I think he's asking for twenty million dollars, and that's just going to take in Lakefront right at the time, and then we will expand in the bucket as, as progress. So I've talked to Connie a little bit about this, and, and I don't, with all the other projects that we are asking for in this deal, I'm like, I don't know if we're gonna get twenty million, but Connie kind of suggested that maybe we go for a feasibility study and look at, I know Lakeport's trying to work a deal with the reservation to get sewer, and I don't know how far that they are, that maybe we build a sewer plant somewhere locally, halfway or something, I, I don't know, but I don't know, do we wanna go ahead and ask for the twenty million, or do we want to, I mean, they're gonna ask, they're not gonna ask, they will back us up, O U A, because they will be the ultimate person that, that runs this thing once it's built, but but I, I just don't know if we should ask for the twenty million, or try to get some money to do, an engineer can come in and look at the whole project and say, hey, here's what you really need to do. But I was asked by Donald Hay for to put this in our wish list, the twenty million, so I'm just, yes, Mr. Alves?
I was just gonna say, you probably need twenty million before you get everything else.
I was just going to say you'd probably need 20 million before you get everything else. If it's something for sewer, tie that in something for sewer. Get that before you get everything else.
But I mean, us as a county, we're already asking for close to 20 million right now. But I will talk to Mr. Hayford again and see what his, I mean, I just don't want to throw 20 million out there and then he's saying, no, we're going to do it, and we don't have nothing to do anything with. But I, you know, I just don't know if we're going to...
I think we need more information really before we just say, yeah, let's ask for 20. I don't know if that requires a feasibility study or not, but I know we need it, we're going to need it, but...
Well, we needed it yesterday. But we did, we did apply through another grant system, they did anyway, last year for that money they didn't get it. But let me talk to him again, but I just want to make sure that you guys know what's going on here before. What we got till about January?
The delegation documentation will probably be due toward the end of December to the members of the delegation. That's usually, you know, two weeks prior to the January 8th. So, maybe after, after Christmas, they might require copies.
So, I'll let you know something next meeting if we need to put in for the whole 20 million or if we need to do something different.
Okay.
Mr. Farah?
So, having done the before, you're going to need to show, we did a meeting...
Yeah, come on up. Just state your name for the record.
Paul Farah. So, when I've done this in other municipalities and you need to show, if you're going to build a plant to take units offline, and units, maybe you wanted to provide Lakeport with this, you need to show your reduction total phosphorus and total nitrogen to show them what you're going to reduce the impact in the environment by, in order for them to even understand what the cost benefit analysis is. So, I don't know, OUA's going to do that?
Pete has that, it has...
Yeah, because you're going to need that information, otherwise you're dead in the water without that.
Well, he's got the, how much, what we do is what he's...
I haven't seen that, but I was just, I just know that's going to be key to getting it done and getting, if you're going to make it a regional plant, then you could just show a potential road to it as well.
All right. Well, I will get back on Mr. Hayford and bring it back to the board next meeting and make sure that, you know, whatever we got to do, we got to do. I'd estimate it's tough getting money this year with the hurricanes and everything else, but...
Yeah, based on the orientation introductions from Speaker Perez and President Sandal Burton, it's going to be under my budget, and I'm using previously.
Anything that you guys, you guys want to add as a priority on your chairs or...
Well, I do. June, have you passed on the Congressman Franklin's age number to Connie?
Yes.
Have you reached out to her about?
About 74, about 74. Their hearing project appropriations process will probably open up in March. So, I will contact Allison and I have a copy of last year's questions, so we can kind of go by that as a guideline to fill in for that grant application.
All right, just want to make sure you have that.
Yes, sir.
And that was the two what it's on before?
Well, if we're going to ask for money from the feds, it would be to fix a road. I don't know that they would have any hand in turning a county road over this time.
Yeah, well, I had some discussions with one of the guys from FDOT a while back. And he basically, I told him, I said, you know, we're just taking all our tax money to pay for a road that we don't use. I mean, a farmer's that does that, but, and he basically said, well, we would think about taking, he didn't say you can take it back, but he said, we would think about taking it back if you would bring it up to DOT standards. So, maybe if we get this money from the Senator, we could bring it up to DOT standards and say, here, we did what you said, now...
All right, so you're looking at almost 15 to 20 minutes?
Yeah.
To do that, got that? So, I will definitely reach out to his staff and talk with them.
Thank you.
And that's something that we need to talk about with, along with what we got going to Senator Tucker and tell them, maybe they could give us some money to bring it up to standard too. I don't know.
Well, water money versus transportation money, you're in two different pots of the state budget. So, that's not a conflict as far as competing. So, I will rework the delegation document for an ask of transportation funds. But ultimately, prefer to turn it over to them without doing anything, let them take it and fix it. That's the ultimate goal, if you don't have, you know, spending money to fix it. So, maybe we can work on that part too. Is that it?
Anything else? I think that's enough.
Okay, thank you.
All right, number 13, request approval for Budget Amendment 23-24-19 and corresponding Resolution 24-28, adjusting the budget of the general fund for fiscal year end.
Good evening, Pastor Morgan, Planning Director. I do, if you don't mind, have an updated budget amendment document that I would like to distribute. The fiscal, there's one for you if you can pick my phone up. We're in the process of fiscal year end close, so it goes to only the very last moment, which is tonight. So, I apologize for the last minute changes. I did try to highlight, there's not many, two changes, actually three revisions that were made in green on the new handout, so you can see where the differences were. So, for those that aren't familiar with the new commissioners, welcome. What this budget amendment is doing is closing out our fiscal year 23, 24 budget. During the budget process, the board does the best we can, departments estimating what their operations will look like for the year. And then as things comes up, we do try to adjust the budget throughout the year the best we can. And then when we get to the end of the year and they're booking final entries and accruals, we have a clean-up budget amendment in an effort just to pull everything together for fiscal year end. So, I know this budget amendment looks rather large, it's pretty complex. I've tried to break it out by your different funds. And the first one being the largest is your general fund. You'll see this budget amendment is increasing the general fund budget by $968,733.60. It's a combination of various items that we're including. We did receive a significant allotment of Amendment One funding that was not budgeted during the beginning of the year. So, that is essentially what has been used to balance the budget, we're budgeting those additional revenues. And I'll just kind of run through for informational purposes. If you have additional questions, you can ask along the way. But you'll see technology, based on what we budgeted, we're increasing the technology budget by $29,500. County manager, $7,000. Human resources does not increase at all, we're just suggesting line item detail. Comprehensive planning, we're increasing the budget by $84,550. And it's essentially related to the professional services, contracted services that were obtained in that department. We have code enforcement is increasing by $22,000, again, related to the contractual services within that department. Health department had some maintenance issues throughout the year, primarily with AC units and alarm systems, so security systems. So, that budget is increasing by $14,000. There's several line items related to the sheriff's office and federal equitable shares. Those, the net effect of those increases are zero. They're tied to grant funding for law enforcement, salaries and for the task force brings. And then for federal equitable shares, their budget they have requested throughout the year. And the board has approved, without outside of budget amendment, they approved the authority, just, we didn't do the budget amendment at the time. But it's tied to use of money that they've already received throughout the year, or prior years. Same with local law enforcement trust. The fire department, there's $100,000 in there related to insurance proceeds that were received on the truck that was totaled in the accident. So, they had had machinery and equipment expenditures for replacement parts, equipment on that vehicle. And then we did receive the insurance proceeds of $100,000. The small fire, the volunteer fire departments that we budgeted, the net effect of those four departments was a $2,510 increase. We had a matching emergency grant, we're just moving funding between line items, so that net effect is zero. Same with the EMS base grant, we originally budgeted in certain line items, I mean, spending on different, in different categories. EMS Station One, which is your primary personnel services and operating expense for EMS, their budget is increasing $80,000. There was some significant repair and maintenance issues and then salaries and overtime. There was some smaller increases within another EMS awards grant in your EOC building. Those are, I think, $500 and $1,500. Public safety admin increased $45,000, and it's tied to the contractual services agreement with Okeechobee. We estimated it at the end of the year, and then based on what the billing was throughout the four quarters, it did increase significantly. The next couple, they're washing it out, just changes in line items. And then if you go down a couple more pages, the community centers had some over budget due to maintenance items totaling $2,445. And the parks, you guys, previous commission had approved the use of the small county surplus funding for position. We budgeted, and the salaries were $250 more than we originally budgeted. So, we're just moving revenue from 301 where it's originally budgeted into the general fund. So, that's a summary of the general fund increases. The next couple sections are your other funds. So, 101 is your transportation fund. The board had approved returning monies that we had received from the city. So, that, those three line items are just the budget process to reflect that transfer back to the city of unspent money. 104 is your building department. We, no budget effect, we're just realigning between categories within that fund. Fund 105 is your 911 fund. And we're realigning within one of your 911 grants. And then the next two line items are new grant monies that the county received during the fiscal year. And the budget is just being done to establish the revenue and the expenditure side associated with those grants. 301 is your capital outlay fund. There was, the primary item within that is the Washington Park Community Center restrooms that were approved by the board. At the time the budget was done, they were budgeted at $24,000. The actual cost of those facilities was $39,976. So, we are increasing the budget to account for that additional cost. And then Fund 401, you'll see there is a change in there that I've made. I originally had pulled the difference out of contingency, but when I went back through and reviewed it, the increase we saw this year in your solid waste fund was related to the transportation cost for municipal solid waste. And it was tied primarily to the city of Houston and the city of Morehaven, Morehaven that were used in our facility. We originally did not anticipate that when we did the budget. So, the hauling costs were higher, but it was offset by an increase in the revenue that we received because they did get invoiced for those services. So, instead of pulling it from contingency, I'm just increasing the revenue budget to cover the difference. So, that's the summary of the budget amendment that's needed for fiscal year end. And it will close out our fiscal year '24, fiscal year '23, '24 budget. It does have a resolution and require a vote.
I think eventually, not eventually, but we need to do, or think on our solid waste and find out if we're making money or if we're losing money out there. And then we have raised rates out there since I've been a commissioner, so I, things have to be getting cost on us more.
You're at a breakeven point, and I have spoke to June about it. And it was something that when the board, during the budget process, we were working on a fee schedule and looking at proposing increased rates for the hauling. You are, I think this year, you'll be at breakeven, well, to close out of fiscal year '24. Essentially, the cost of operating the landfill is just covering what you're bringing in. And that does not probably cover any of the long-term closure costs. So, it is, I would definitely recommend that that be something that the county would go.
All right, I'd like to see all these are in the past, it's already been done.
Yeah, these are already done, it's just more of a formality to get everything in one.
Well, Mr. Farah, motion to approve Budget Amendment 23-24-19 and corresponding Resolution 20-24-28.
All right, I've got a motion by Commissioner Sack, second by Commissioner Taylor, if there's any discussion. We'll do a roll call vote, Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Sack?
Yes.
Myself is yes, Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
So, that is our business agenda. If, I mean, you guys are sitting where you're sitting, but if anybody, y'all want to move around or maybe you're happy where you're at, whatever. This is your chance to move. If I don't draw the arm, somebody else can either. Whatever you guys, whatever you want to say. All right, we'll move on to constitutional officers. Who we got, Sheriff?
Let me congratulate all the commissioners. Yes, Hey was the old one tonight. We're just proud to have y'all in your seats and I look forward to working with everyone. I'd like to thank Tasha, she's an amazing person to work with. I appreciate my finance department and how they work together, so appreciate that, bringing that year to a close. Thank you all. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Okay. Kelly?
I would also like to congratulate the two commissioners, and I look forward to working with all of y'all.
Okay, constitutional, do I have? I don't think I've got anyone talking to you. If you are, stand up. Whether, county attorney, he's not here, he's managing.
Yes, sir, I have a few things this evening. A couple months ago, we had an incident with a county truck, the one that actually does and serves out of the cemetery. There was an accident, the truck was totaled. Archie did do some research and found a vehicle to replace that truck. It is under $50,000, but I would just, I've let the board know, and I'm sure we'll have to do a budget in a minute, that will come back. But we are looking to replace that vehicle. And I believe it was $47,000 is what the price that Archie had come up with. So, just letting you know that we're looking to go ahead and replace that vehicle.
Is it insured? I'm sure it was.
Yes.
Are we going to put it in a claim pool?
Yes, absolutely. I've handed out the appointment list, so that's something that the commissioners can take a look at. Also, I received a phone call from Marty Milkie. And the legislative delegation would like to have a water storage workshop after their legislative delegation here on the 8th. They're looking at actually doing Glades County the last session that day. Marty thinks probably from 3:30 to 4:30, and then after that, having a water storage workshop. Now, I know that our board has scheduled one for December 10th. However, Senator Brawl had suggested that maybe we just combine that and do one session, which is for... One session, which is her preference, um, and do the water storage workshop together on the eighth of January. Um, I have already reserved the Doan Hunter Building for her, um, but if the board wants to go ahead and, um. Attend the workshop, uh, that, that she would like to have, um, I will go ahead and I'll get an advertisement ready for that one. Cause we did advertise for the town, so we, if, if the board chooses, we'll cancel that and move towards the January eighth.
I think that would be good, it's late in the evening and it's more people are. So we'll just be sure to get the word to South Florida Water, Water Management and Lions?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
So you're trying to tell her eight to sleep five o'clock?
Yeah, she's, she's gonna get me a time, but she thinks probably close to five, five-thirty, something like that.
So do we need to get, take a, we need a motion to, um.
Cancel.
Cancel the other?
December tenth.
Seven, second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Patterson, Second Lieutenant Commissioner Taylor to cancel the meeting on December the tenth. And hopefully we will have it on January the eighth. Eight discussions, all favor?
I don't know.
Those, that's his five o'clock, so I don't know, we've already advertised this, this is.
Yeah.
I guess we need to put a memo out there that it's gonna be changed.
Right, we'll do that. Also, on county road seven twenty-one, um, we're still looking at that, we're actually now looking for a April start date. Uh, the tribe has requested that if we couldn't get the road finished before the grand opening, um, in February, then we move it to April. So we're, we're working with, uh, the tribe, we're working with the contractors and our engineer, um, to see, um, about proceeding with maybe an April date. And if you don't have any questions for me on that?
Did they ever start on Crescent and Orme?
They have not started on it yet.
That was supposed to be?
It was supposed to be the, the third week in October, um, they have changed it now, um, I don't have a date with me, but they did set a new date. And I'm, I think it's coming out pretty quick because it was supposed to be.
Yeah, I think it was like November twentieth, the last one that I heard, but. That's Ajax, November?
Yes, Ajax is today. I will get a date, though, I'll get a, I'll get a new date.
Anything for county manager?
Um, excuse me, Commissioner. Any updates on F D O T on the situation at seventy-eight and twenty-seven, are they gonna be able to make, um, any adjustments so that people coming off of those side roads? Their view isn't as obstructive?
Archie did reach out to the contractor, the contractor said that they would actually make some adjustments to rodeo and western. So, so their view was not blocked as they were trying to come out. Um, I don't know if they've done that yet, I do know that the actual intersection of seventy-eight and twenty-seven, F D O T seems to think it's okay. So there won't be any adjustment there until they actually get to the new phase, um, but it's, it's, the whole intersection there is just a mess.
It is a mess, okay. Also, real quick, um, do you know if anyone went out to Washington Park to fix the, the water burn?
I did talk to Archie and he was sending someone out.
Okay.
I did, I didn't have, got enough data as to if it was fixed, but I know he was sending someone.
Okay.
Anything else? Alright, we'll move on to department heads, um. Ms. Pujon, do you have anything?
Briefly, yes. Congratulations, commissioners. I wanted to let you know that a, a limited development order was, um, executed or signed for Lakefront Estates with a phase one A. And that's for the model home center. Just gonna keep you up to date and the concurrence should be within the next day or two.
So, I know, um, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but, but, Nick Sweeney properties, have you looked? Is, is that giant violation of anything from the county with properties done?
When our code officer went out, has gone out there, she can't see anything. I mean, he just sees, you know, unless she's gone onto the property, she can't see anything from right away. She's gonna go again, she was just there, uh, today, but she's gonna go check again, just double check to see if she's missed anything. I told her that you had mentioned that there might be a business operating, but, or that was Mr. Redlockham, I think, that said that, they forwarded me that email. She hadn't seen anything, but she'll look again.
Well, I know he's complaining that the man dug a pond and was filling it his, saying that there, we don't have an ordinance, so if somebody raises their yard three feet, we don't have anything against.
I couldn't find anything, I went over with Ms. Fisher, the sections of the code, which would be chapter thirty, which had to do with erosion and sedimentation. Chapter thirty-one had to do with your stormwater projection and then there was a chapter thirty-three that had to do with your waterways. And I couldn't find anything that, um, you know, addressed your question.
Alright, that's a lot to look, thank you.
Did you happen to have a chance to look at that thing I talked with you about this morning?
Yes, sir, and I had a lot of those.
I'll be with you later.
Okay, yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, this is, uh, thank you for getting the ball rolling with Lakefront Estates and, uh, I know we discussed about, uh, weekly updates, how's that been going? I know they're here tonight, um, so they've been updated as we have on what you just said and they've already known, but. How, how's that going with the weekly updates, are we able to provide that, have we been able to provide that?
Everything's just sort of melding together in my mind right now, um, you know, we doing okay?
We're getting it.
Yeah, we have, we have conversations, frequent conversations, he, he comes to visit a lot.
Okay.
So we're working hard with them, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anything else? Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
You too. Uh, Tasha, you got anything else, um, Bailey, you got anything?
Congratulations to all, county offices are closed Thursday and Friday.
Rosemary, you got anything?
Nothing to report.
Any other department heads in here that are missing? Let's see, uh, who would want to commission his items, um, Mr. Sap?
Well, the, my biggest thing is you hit on the, this question, April, but it's, I keep getting calls and telling people this is a start date, this is start date. And I'm tired of this, something, somebody needs to step on some toes and tell them, fix it, just get this damn road fixed. I mean, drive, go out there and drive it.
Yeah.
It's terrible and the people having to live there and school buses are running there and, and DOT or whoever, the engineers, whoever they are, nobody cares. And I'm tired of being criticized on the phone and, and the man, well, called me a liar because I said it's gonna start this date, and it doesn't. And who, who do we, who do we talk to, who needs to talk to somebody?
I, I, I will reach out to, um, Steve Knapp with aid engineering, um, they are the ones who issued the notice to proceed, I will reach out to him.
Why do they keep postponing, why do they have to change the start date, what's the problem, do they, do you know?
I, I understand that it was a materials issue with the contractor, but I, I will get a new start date for you.
Alright.
Supposedly that's like those twenty-one, that, you know, I'm trying to get asphalt for some reason, I don't know. But like you say, we've been round and round and round on this road for.
It's time.
Time for it to get done.
And that's all I have.
Taylor?
Well, I think most of the thing I covered with, with June and with Sue earlier, um, I would like to congratulate, uh, commissioners.
Absolutely.
Nice to pull up here, glad you're on here, congratulations. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and that's all.
Patterson? Just looking forward to getting started with everything, um, you know, we've, August eighteenth, the phone started ringing, so. However, we've, uh, you know, being on plan, that's on the board in the past and few of the boards that I've sat on, I am somewhat accustomed to it. I would, I'd really like to keep a focus on code enforcement, I'd really like to keep a focus on the lake, um, and, and watching our spending. You know, it, it's times are getting really tight, really lean and, uh, we're not always gonna be able to reach out to the state for, for money. So we need to, we need to control it on our side as well, um, you know, we just heard a new pickup truck, forty-seven thousand dollars, I've been shopping for one too. There's cheaper ones out there, so, you know, uh, that'll do the same job. And I think we just need to pay attention to it, uh, we have to remember that it's not our money, it's everybody's money, we need to treat it as such, and that's all I have.
Mr. Barnes?
I have nothing, sir, other than, if everyone has a good Thanksgiving.
I don't have a whole lot, um, just to get kind of a little update on broadband, um, Connect Sun, which is good, Glades Electric, they are really going to town and, and the Lakeport now, they're getting that set up, but. I don't know what's going on with Comcast, they got a bunch of money to, to do, but they haven't shown up at our, um, monthly meetings, but. Trying to get an update from them, but we are getting a good portion of Glades County, it's gonna be in the broadband probably within the end of the year. But, um, we still don't have anything for use, but we are working on that, trying to get something, if anybody has any connections with a cell tower, Muse would love to have a cell tower too, so. Anyway, that's out there, but, um, other than that, I don't have anything, you know, so, um, everybody have a great Thanksgiving. And, um, I noticed the board did cancel their December twenty-third meeting tonight, but we will still have our twenty-third meeting, so, uh, anything else, any more business? Alright, if all of our business is done, we are adjourned, uh, I don't know what.